It's 5:30. I'll call the meeting of the Ramsey County Commission to order. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge the orders of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First item on the agenda tonight would be the approval of the September 3rd meeting minutes. Anybody had a chance to read those? Any additions or corrections to those?
Move to approve.
We have a motion. We have a second to approve the minutes from the September 3rd meeting minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Approval of the agenda. Any additions to the agenda tonight?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as printed. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Agenda is approved. First item on tonight's agenda would be the High County Highway. Mr. Fieldson.
Howdy. Just to start off, we'll update some of the projects we have going. The thin lift overlay on Ramsey County 3 has been put down now. That's finished as far as the asphalt part. We still got to put the guardrails on that bridge. Cut some stop strips in up by 17. And paint it. And then that'll be done. Any questions there? Gravel projects, close did finish all the projects. Deadline was September 15th, so we've got them all done now. Ramsey County 4, north of 17, that's done. 6 over by Southum is done. And the Ramsey County Nelson County line over by Barton.
Kevin, how much gravel did they put on when they were putting down?
Um, all of them got 500 yards per mile except for 4 way up by Edmore. That was laid on gravel, so it's 600. That's pretty standard. I mean, every year we put 500 yards per mile. Any other questions? Okay, then we got the invoices from close. It's not the first of the month, but they add up to quite a bit, so I thought maybe I could get payment on those. There are three projects. Ramsey County 6 was $50,340. Ramsey County 4C between 8 and 7 was $55,050. And the Ramsey County Nelson County line, I had a typo there. It's 68,000, not 86, so it's 68,400. The total is correct though at 173,790. And we didn't get the invoice from the FEMA sites. He was putting the last load on today. So we'll get that later. So right now I entertain a motion to pay for the three projects. The close did, close construction did finish.
Do we have a motion to pay close construction?
So move. Second.
We have a motion and a second to pay close construction for the gravel. On the three different projects, 173,790 is the total. Anybody have any discussion? No discussion. Roll call, please.
Volk.
Aye.
Gessner.
Aye.
Otis.
Aye.
Wilhelmie.
Aye.
Fritz.
Aye. Motion passes.
And then I need to order 12 grader tires. Three of the motor graders for winter. We'll just put them on our rear and save the good ones that are on our rears for the fronts for now. I have three quotes, one from Goodyear. For each one of these tires is the exact same tire, same name, brand and everything, so. Goodyear was 13,020 dollars just for the tires. Pumps was 16,320 dollars just for the tires. Les Schwab was 21,060 dollars. And none of that includes the mounting or rings or anything else they need. So I'd like to entertain a motion to go ahead and order those 12 grader tires.
What's it gonna cost to mount them?
Uh, about $45 each and then there's a ring. An O-ring that goes on a split rim. It's probably $10.
Yep. So you just want us to choose which one out of the three here?
Yep.
I'll make a motion to take Goodyear's 13,020.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go with the low price quote of Goodyear for 13,020 for 12 grader tires. Further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries.
I think I had a line item of 30,000 for tires, so we're good there. That's all I have. Unless anybody's got questions for me.
Nothing at the moment.
All right.
Thank you. Since it's not 6 o'clock yet, we could probably move on to our new business. Approve the special permits. We have two of them.
I'll move to approve the special permits.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve these special permits. Now submitted. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Uh, NDTC purchase agreement phone system. Is that in our team's packet or?
Yes.
So this is something that's been put off for a number of years. And it's high time we get the phone systems upgraded in the office here. Total bid price was 65,929.49. And we were taking this out of
The ARPA funds.
The ARPA funds. Right. So.
This is something we talked about before, right Candy?
We've been talking about it since 2021.
This is all voice over IP system that what this is?
No.
No?
No.
Is that something that we wanted to look at? We want to look at different options? Was there?
Um, I know that he gave me a quote for that, but it didn't involve any new wiring that had to be done to get that.
I'm far from an expert in it.
Yeah, yeah.
What I have at work.
I know that, I know that when we first discussed it back in 2021 that it was like the two options. And I believe it was part of the
I think there was part of a grant that got taken off the table.
Yeah, because they changed the criteria of what you could do within the grant, so you couldn't make any changes to your existing wiring. It had to be all new. So then that kind of scratched that idea, because it was
So this here, we don't, oh, there's some $11,000 wiring installation?
Yeah.
So with this wiring installation, it wouldn't work obviously with the other system that you're talking about?
Um.
I mean, I don't know what you're like.
Our other system is on its last.
Right. The system we have now.
Yeah. Yeah. We, um, maybe a month ago now, three weeks, um, we had a part go out, which it affected certain parts of the courthouse. Um, so NDTC came to fix it and that was the last part that they have.
So we're gonna need to look at rewiring the courthouse sometime.
Well, this would be part of it, I think.
They're, they're going to use some of the current wiring. Um, but with, you know, I'm not sure what, you know, his quote for the wire, if like, is, if that's just for that new system. But it's not going to be like rewiring for every phone. Like we had hoped that we could do with that grant money.
So this just, this takes care of the whole courthouse or just one floor?
That would take care of the entire courthouse minus the court, the state court, because they have something different. Internet.
Right.
Yep. Yep. So it's Yep. I better make sure he included that.
Did he ever turn on the lights?
Um, once the contract is signed. Uh, well, I've gotten quite a few, but, um, ordering it would be about two weeks. And then to get it scheduled.
Did he say how long it would take, how much downtime there'd be? Like, once they do this?
Um, hopefully not much because they would do it, you know, do the switch over like during non-working.
Table it and have him come in and explain some things to us. Because if you have some questions about voice over IP, I would entail.
I'm far from being an expert, I would say, enough to be dangerous, but I guess we're not sure if
If they're
Kevin's included in, purpose included in this.
I, I would like to have an explanation like on a voice.
Yeah.
You know, if it's, if we're gonna spend, let's say another 20,000 and you have the best system out there, or are we just?
What's the advantages versus disadvantages?
Exactly.
What's pros and cons?
I mean, obviously something needs to be done.
Yep.
But I think we should, my feelings is look at, you know, what's the best option for? I mean, I'm not against it. I just think if we got the opinion of both and then make a decision from there.
I was telling Candy earlier, I don't know a thing about phones other than I pick them up when they ring and
Well, and then we just, we need to make sure that Kevin's on this.
Yeah, so.
This list aligns.
Right. Yeah, so it'd be in a foreign language. So, um, if we could have a NDTC rep come to our next meeting and answer a few of these questions, I'd feel more comfortable with it.
Yep.
That'd be okay.
Yep.
Need a motion for that? To table it or?
Sure. Motion to table.
I'll make a motion to table it and have someone come out and explain it to us.
Okay.
Second.
We have motion and a second to go ahead and table the NDTC purchase agreement until uh, somebody can come out and give us some explanations. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. All right. Other new business, um, I noticed, um, we had a letter from DOT on the Highway 2 corridor.
I mean, to me, it looks like it's a good letter for us.
Yeah. It sure seems like it is. Um, Kevin, have you seen this? Okay.
I reviewed it. We don't have any projects planned out there. We don't have any right of way out there, so as far as I know, we don't have any concerns.
Yeah. So it looked like a very good positive letter on our, on our behalf, um, addressed to Ramsey County and South Milwaukee Township. It basically says, thank you for your letter regarding upcoming Highway 2 project from Devil's Lake to Hefty Rust Area. The department supports your recommended improvements for access management by eliminating seven access points and six median crossovers. The department is also reviewing opportunities to eliminate additional access points to further enhance safety for all users. Your letter recommends several improvements to further grow the turn lanes. The department is reviewing these along with the alignment improvements at a few access points. The department will also evaluate speed limit reductions as previously requested by the county. With support from both county and township in reducing the number of access points, the department will move forward with Highway Safety Improvement Program. Uh, project for this segment of US Highway 2. Layouts showing recommended improvements are being prepared. Department would like to meet with county and townships later this fall to discuss improvements. Uh, the HSIP project would be fully funded by North Dakota DOT with no monetary contribution needed by either county or township. This HSIP project would be prioritized with other needs across the state and added to an appropriate construction year based on availability of funding. Appreciate your dedication and the county and townships have contributed. Uh, if you have any questions or would like to discuss this further, contact me. Joe Ketterling, Professional Engineer, Office of Project Development. So that's good news. Um, in regards to the Hefty Rust Area project, um, there've been far too many tragedies on that stretch of road and I'm glad they're taking recommendations from local people that have made those concerns known and recommendations on limiting access points to that, so.
What do they consider the access points as, or they take it from the roadway and then into the road? Alongways to have one access point, what, middle access point, what would they consider as access points?
The access points would be in approach off the, of into the highway or
Into the highway and make a road ditch instead and one access point?
Or they're eliminating? Potentially. Um, we haven't seen their plans yet, and so hopefully this fall sometime they'll have preliminary plans drawn up. Before the, the plans that they had, the J-turns, if you recall, were was a horrible idea and we made that known to the DOT officials, so we're really glad and um, think that this letter's a positive direction for that. Um, because I don't think those J-turns are being considered any longer. And, uh, which is good news for everybody involved locally. And, uh, hopefully they can come up with a good plan that'll work for all the residents out there. Improved safety is a big concern. We had to put a time on this public hearing that we uh, so, um, one announcement, Ramsey County Fair and Rodeo Associations are having a steak fry benefit out at the, uh, Ramsey County Event Center west of town on Highway 19, uh, this Saturday, September 21st. Uh, encourage people to go out there and support their efforts on raising funds for the new facility. It's starting to take shape and seeing the footprint is, hey, it's a big building. Now, um, 150 by 250 is is a, uh, big undertaking, so.
What time is it?
5 o'clock.
5 o'clock? 5 till gone, I think, or, yep. So. Uh, anybody else have any announcements they'd like to share before we dig a five minute break? Now, we'll come back in five minutes for the, uh, public hearing for the preliminary tax budget. We'll call the, uh, meeting of the Ramsey County Commission back to order. It is 6 o'clock and, uh, time to open up the public hearing comment period for the 2025, uh, county budget. Uh, at this time, it is, uh, set aside for public to come up and express their views to the county commission before the 2025 budget is approved. The budget may be examined in the auditor's office. Um, in the time between 8 and noon and 1, between 1 and 5 weekdays, Monday through Friday. Um, so with that, uh, public comment, to ask you that people that would have a comment, come up to the podium, uh, state your name and, um, record and go ahead and hear your concerns. Um, we'll open up the floor for comments if anybody's here to do that.
I don't disagree that, uh, my name's Heather McDonald. Um, we have two, we have three um, properties here in Ramsey County, uh, between the Devil's Lake Speedway, our home in Doyan, and then our lake, lake property. I don't disagree that I don't disagree that the county employees need, need to have a cost of living raise. I don't disagree that the county doesn't have bills to pay. I guess my main concern is, you know, when I bought my lake property. Um, it said on the tax sheet that it was fifty-two bucks a year. Well, that's great. I had no, no intentions on building on that property for quite a number of years. And now this year, my potential increase is seventeen point nine percent. And I have nothing, nothing on there. I don't have a shed. It's just an empty lot. And it's over a thousand dollars. And what am I getting for it? Our roads never bladed. The road at the racetrack gets bladed. Once every quarter. And half the time he puts all the gravel on the side of the road, it ends up in the ditch and then we have to go and fix it with our own equipment. There, we went months, we haven't seen, had snow removal, we've had to do it ourselves to stay open. Or we've been reliant on our neighbors to get us open, borrow their equipment, their fuel, our time. So I guess my, my biggest concern is if I'm gonna pay more in taxes. I should start receiving some services and I think my neighbor should see some services. Now. I spent quite a bit of time on the west side of the county. Your roads are beautiful. I'm jealous of how beautiful your roads are. Our roads suck on that side of the county. They're washboardy. We're constantly having to have repairs on our vehicles because it's hard on them. So I'm just, if we're gonna get, have to pay more in taxes, then we should get something for it. And that's all I, I guess I can really ask.
We've also had our house since we bought it, uh, eight years ago. We've had it go from two fifty to now it's up to six hundred. The racetrack when we bought the place, it was twelve hundred, now we're over thirty-six hundred, it's tripled. Like we're, it's just getting ridiculous. So, and like.
We have nothing to show for.
We have nothing to show for it, all these taxes that went up, it hasn't helped us one bit.
We can't even get gravel. Our road now needs gravel.
Could we have gravel? I've had to put it on myself on your guys' road, twice now.
On our road.
Your road, Ninety-Eighth Avenue.
Is, is technically, is a township.
Township, county road.
But our township only gets enough money to gravel two miles a road a year.
I've had to do it myself and I've graded it myself all summer long. And, and when they do come through with the grader, they do such an awful job, I usually have to fix it.
Somebody's gonna get killed if we don't fix it.
No, somebody's not gonna get killed.
Well, if they flip, they come in with a race follower and they flip the trailer.
So you're talking the road going into the.
Going into the racetrack.
Hey, is that a?
Ninety-Eighth Avenue.
Nine is a township road and then you have to, when you turn left to go into the bar, that is our, that is our, that's our responsibility.
We don't get the snow removal at all, they, we're the last people, we're not even open until Thursday, cause so on Tuesday or Monday, we don't get any snow removal at all, zero.
Have you talked to your township?
We've.
Our township, we.
They say that they talk to.
Kevin.
Kevin and.
I mean.
They can't get anywhere with them either, so.
If we, you know, we, everybody in our township, we just kind of adjusted to, we're just taking care of each other at this point. Cause there was several months, a few winters ago, we didn't, nobody saw anything and we were just opening each other up and. At some point, if we're gonna, if we're gonna see a tax increase, then we should have something to show for it.
It's been multiple thousands, my, my taxes have gone up since I moved here. It's really hard to run a business when you start re-raise and raise and raise and raise.
I had to be closed, we had to be closed one weekend, couple winters ago. We got, yeah, we got the food truck in. We kept the road open long enough to get the food truck in and out. And we came back in half an hour and we were done. And then I had to borrow a loader from the elevator. I had to pay somebody to move all the snow so we could stay open the rest of the winter. We had to haul all that snow up. The blade came Monday. Well, that doesn't do me any good, I just missed two days of business. We are in Bartlett Township. We had the township, we re-gravelled the road a couple of years ago. And all the gravel, all the gravel ended up in the ditch.
And you guys know it ain't cheap to gravel roads.
No, we just got done paying that.
Yep.
So you, you know, on this increase that you're looking at, you know, it's not all county, right?
No, I, I'm, I'm well aware of that.
So you have a eight dollar increase.
You're right.
And one, a thirty-two dollar.
We're, we're not even talking about all this year, it's been, it's been.
Same with this year, it's be, because a lot of it's because of the vote that one.
No, and we, and we know that, we understand that, but.
We've never been able to get here and, and talk about it over the last five years. And we've wanted to because it has substantially went up. I mean, it's been insane.
I'm glad you guys.
Like I said, like I said, twelve hundred dollars when I moved here was my, my tax bill at the racetrack and now it's over thirty-six hundred, I don't even know what it is, it didn't even.
Thirty-six eighty-one.
Yeah. My house was two fifty, now it's over six hundred, my lake lot said fifty-six when we bought it, now it's over a thousand. It's an acre and a half of dirt. There's a thousand bucks. I don't know who's assessing that, but it is seriously.
It's nothing.
Nothing. And half, half an acre of that's in the lake, so it's only an acre. I don't know where a thousand dollars an acre comes in, but apparently. I know the guy that had it before me was fifty-two bucks. We thought that was pretty great. EAD. Yep, that's what it is. It's a gravel pit. Hey, we don't part our Steve's house. I know the survey's wrong. We're actually a little bit past on the actual survey where, where you can see it's worked up.
Past what that line is saying?
Yeah, the.
It's, it's just off a little bit on this, on the county survey. Yeah, we had it. No, I had, I had it re-surveyed three times, so.
Have you brought that in or recorded that?
The, the real estate agent was supposed to do it. Yeah, actually that.
Is that down as, what is that down candy? Is that down as residential or is it down as?
Thirty-seven hundred proposed.
We didn't.
We didn't build anything.
We didn't, we didn't close on it until twenty, until March of twenty-one. Actually, it might've been March of twenty-two.
No, it was March of twenty-one.
Was it March of twenty-one?
My, my question is it, is it down as a lot or is it down as farmland, you know what I'm saying? Cause it makes a difference. I, I don't know how to read it either. Yeah, I don't, I don't know how to.
Right. I mean, we're just kind of maybe asking that it get reassessed because, I mean, a thousand dollars for.
For, for, for acre of dirt.
And half of it's in the lake, doesn't really. Doesn't really seem fair.
And actually that lot, this was the face of others, that it's supposed to pinpoint the other.
Definitely not commercial. We're not even allowed to have commercial stuff there with the, with the HOA.
When we, when we had. Can't think of their names. Vanguard, there you go. Like when they did all the. Commercial property reevaluations.
Well, I can think of that's probably what, what happened when their racetrack went up a couple of years ago, probably.
It was a few years ago, huh?
Where it was reassessed, revalued.
Yeah.
When all the commercial property in the county was, was revalued.
Yeah, it tripled.
It would, it would be commercial property until something was built. That's how it's assessed.
Yeah, and then when we build on it, we're gonna double our taxes.
It'll, it'll quadruple.
Yeah.
It'll go to residential.
Fine, they'll put a shed on it and then it's residential? I mean, what are we talking here?
Nine hundred square foot tiny home, tiny home, yeah. That's, that's all, we just.
You, you see our concern.
How much more is it gonna go up? How much more, how much longer are, are we gonna continue to foot the bill? Until it breaks our backs? And the other residents' backs? And the other business owners' backs? We all wanna grow and prosper as a community, but it's getting tougher and tougher every day.
Yeah, I've never had any help from Ramsey County as far as anything to do with the racetrack or anything, so. This all, always seems to go higher and higher.
Okay, that's all we got.
Thank you. Anybody else here for the, uh, public hearing for the twenty twenty-five property tax? Property budget for the county.
It still goes off your PIN. The, the aerial line isn't always correct. That's why there's PIN numbers. That's, that's.
Anybody else here for the twenty twenty-five budget hearing? Hearing none, we'll close the hearing for the twenty twenty-five budget. And now we're back into regular session. And we can. Open up discussion. We don't have to approve our budget till the third of October, believe it is, or the second? Where's the first? First. First meeting in October, the budget will be finalized and approved for the twenty twenty-five calendar year. Any, uh, reductions? Remember, we can go down, we cannot go up from what we approved at our preliminary budget hearing back in August. Any other discussion for tonight? No other discussion, meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming.